The Board would now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the robe.
Alderwoman Tyus, Alderwoman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderwoman Ingracia, Alderman Colder, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortman, Alderman Valmer, Alderman Villa, Alderman Honowitz, Alderwoman Murphy, Alderwoman Howard, Alderwoman Green, Alderwoman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderwoman Davis, Alderwoman Spencer, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vaccaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cohen, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderwoman Krusen, President Reed,
Here.
Alderwoman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Ingracia, Alderman Conway, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderman French, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Williamson. Twenty.
Present.
Quorum being present, I'm gonna ask Alderwoman Davis to come up to the dais and join me to introduce Mrs. Zernona Clayton, a civil rights leader and legend all across this nation who will be leading us in prayer today and also just introduce a couple of the other guests that are attending today.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the Board. It gives me great honor this morning for us to have the opportunity to have a legend in our presence. Zernona Clayton Brady has been known throughout the civil rights movement to be steadfast and totally committed, even to this day. For some of you all who don't know, she was the right hand to Dr. Martin Luther King. When you see documentaries and pictures, you will see her standing there. She has been very, very strong with the Southern Leadership Conference and also she has done wonders for herself in being a broadcast executive. She became involved with Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. in his early, early years in getting started with the civil rights movement. Now she's gone on to be a television legend and she also has experience in working very closely with Urban Affairs with Turner Broadcasting. And she was also one of the first African Americans to have a TV show in the Atlanta region. Ms. Clayton created the Trumpet Awards Foundation and International Civil Rights Walk of Fame to honor the achievements of African Americans and civil rights advocates. She convinced a grand dragon of the Ku Klux Klan to denounce the Klan. Ms. Clayton has been honored by the National Association of Advancement of Color People and the City of Atlanta for her work. I have heard her speak. She is incredible, but it's most befitting that she gives us this prayer today based on where we are in our world with all the troubles and most especially, it is also Juneteenth. The Honorable, and you are honorable, Zernona Clayton.
Thank you. Thank you. How heavy our hearts are today. As the President said, we've done this too many times. One of my great blessings was to live and work with a man who said that nonviolence is not a tactic, it's a way of life. We've gotta learn to love rather than hate. I think what I saw in the stories I've been seeing all morning is that racism is still present. We are trying to say it's behind us. It is not. We've gotta deal with it every day. Dr. King said that we must work every day to change negative attitudes. He said unless and until we change a man's heart, we will never be able to regulate his behavior. We've gotta do it every day. And realize that under God, under His teachings, we know that each of us was created by God in His own image and underneath the skin, we're all the same. And the moment we recognize that and realize that, then we can practice this love for one another regardless of color. I know we can do it. I've had the experience to do it. It works and it makes you feel good when you can learn to love and accept everybody the same as you feel you are accepted in this society. Thank you for this moment today and maybe this will be a wake-up call for all of us to change negative attitudes wherever they exist. And now for a moment of silence for everybody who's impacted and we all are. Let's bow our heads. Let's start today to love instead of hate. Thank you.
To thank Ms. Clayton for those words of inspiration and prayer. Do you want to tell who some of your other guests are before we head with the regular order?
Thank you. We are very honored today to have some other guests here. As most of you know, the Salute to Women Gala is tonight and we are very blessed to have some of those who are participating and supporting to be here with us this morning. And you know who I'm going to introduce first because I've been talking about him for three weeks and that is Richard Roundtree. Stand. Thank you. That's Shaft. All right. Also, we have with us a very distinguished young lady. She is a classical operatic singer from Africa and she will be entertaining us tonight. Abi Odun, please stand. There's a group here that some of you know from the old, back in the day and you young folks, you don't know nothing about this kind of music, but Ray Goodman and Brown, stand. We also have with us supporters of our honoree tonight for a lifetime achievement, which will be Angela Wimbush. So I'd like to ask Wanda and Ronald Thomas to please stand and thank you for coming down today. Maria Newby is here also supporting the event. And of course, I have to recognize someone who has been working 24/7 on this event who is also a strong, strong employee of the Urban League of Metropolitan St. Louis, Marlon Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. And also, we wanna, from this Board of Aldermen, the City of St. Louis, wanna welcome all of the guests today that have come to join us in the chambers. If you haven't recognized, it's a little bit warm in here. We don't have air conditioning in the chambers, so you have to bear through it, but we appreciate you coming down, especially you, Brother Roundtree. Ms. Clayton, thank you so much for those inspirational words. With that, we will spin our regular order of business, take of our Courtesy Resolution Calendar, I move for adoption our Courtesy Resolution Calendar, entertain a second on it motion, seconded by the Alderman from the 18th. Alderman from the... Which one? The older one from the 20th? The older one from the 20th, you're here for resolution number 66?
I'm gonna go down after my speaker and then after we get on again, we have to finish the session, come to the second floor. Okay. Okay. Can I have a question?
Excellent, come on, come on.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I'm very honored to recognize the efforts of Randy and Jeff Vines and STL Style on their five-year anniversary. Cherokee Street has gotten quite a bit of recognition for being one of the most magnetic and interesting small business districts in the city, but five years ago, this was not really the case and this STL Style opening on Cherokee Street has really done a lot to stabilize that budding new commercial district that we all have grown to know and love as of today. So I'd like to recognize the Vines Brothers with resolution number 66 along with my colleague, Alderman Ken Ortman. And I'll just read an excerpt from it very quickly here. Whereas this small shop on Cherokee serves much more than just a tee-shirt shop but sparks a passion for the city and every customer that walks through the door. The Vines Brothers have succeeded in helping to make saving old buildings hip and through their iconic designs have made loving St. Louis a cool thing to do because, as the Vines Brothers say, "You can't spell style without STL."
Do I want to guess? I wanna congratulate the Vine Brothers and, you know, they're a small business that actually moved in when it was the 20th ward, now they're the 9th ward, but they're not a quiet business. You know, you always know their opinion and where they're coming from, which I really appreciate, so... And I think we need to make two of these resolutions because there's two of them, so we wanna make sure, and maybe three of them, one that they can put in the store and one that each one of them can take home, so... Dave, where are you? Is that okay? We can make a couple more? Thank you, sir. And thank you again and congratulations.
I don't know if higher honor could be bestowed upon us, being the diehard city lovers and advocates that we are. We sincerely appreciate it and it's been one adventure after another, being a part of the burgeoning Cherokee Street seed and then involved in other activists and advocacy affairs throughout the city, but we sincerely appreciate it and I guess since I'm at City Hall, it's a good time to renew our business license.
Yeah. And Randy, maybe we should rethink our move to Chesterfield Mall now that we've got this ... Thank you so much.
Yeah, don't go to Chesterfield Mall. Alderwoman from the... Alderwoman from the 6th.
Members of the Board, I would like to move for this resolution to be in bank.
Moved by the Alderwoman from the 6th, entertain a second on it, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 28th, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Madam Clerk, please prepare another copy of that resolution in bank. The Vines Brothers, you guys have done tremendous things through your tee-shirt shop. I've seen you work to save Taco Bell, you know, the, what is, the Saucer, the Saucer Building or the Del Taco Building. You guys have been active in all of the major movements around town, so I cannot thank you enough for not just running your business here, but for getting involved in the community and helping people who a lot of times would not have any other, any other support. You guys have been out there helping and behind them. This resolution is the highest honor this Board has to give any organization or individual, right? And what it does, that it cements in time some of your many contributions to our community up until this point, so that 100, 200 years from now, when they read about the Renaissance of the City of St. Louis, they'll read about the contributions that you made and they'll know that we paused in our deliberations on this day to recognize you. So congratulations, continue the good works on behalf of the resident city of St. Louis and your parents did a great job raising you.
Have a good time tomorrow.
And short of a resolution, Alderwoman from the 19th had a resolution, a courtesy resolution, but short of the courtesy resolution, she was going to have another quick presentation and that would be a little more impactful, she says.
We will have about 30 seconds from Abu Odun. Okay? Thank you.
Swing low, sweet chariot, coming for to carry me home. Swing low, sweet chariot, coming for to carry me home. Thank you very much.
Eric, can everybody stand? Let's give her one more round of applause. Could you stand? Let's give them a round of applause. And to all of the special guests, we cannot thank you enough. We have some resolutions, I think you guys will get a little bit later today or tonight, we're gonna make you all honorary St. Louisans, so this is your second home or your first home. Feel free to call it your first home. So thank you so much. I just told Shaft or Richard Roundtree, I don't know, I may have been able to take him. He said, "No, I have a stunt double." You can't take the stunt double, so you're probably right. We've been moved and seconded that we adopt our Courtesy Resolution Calendar. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. And also invite any of you all who wanna go over and meet any of our special guests, you can before they leave for today. Introduction of honored guests, any introduction of honored guests? Alderwoman from the 15th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I'd like to have as my special guest today Pastor Teresa Danley from St. John's Episcopal Church in the 15th Ward who is here supporting Show Me 15 today, as well as Landry Ford who is also here supporting Show Me 15 and John Chasnov.
Alderman from the 7th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I'd like to have as my special guest Jared Jeffries from SLU Law. He's one of our interns at the Board of Aldermen this summer. Also Paige Selby from AMR UE and Dave Rudolph from the St. Louis Police Officers Association.
Alderwoman from the 6th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I'd like to have as my special guests today Rachel Smith and Mary Pat Clark with the Circuit Attorney's Office.
Alderwoman from the 5th, and Alderwoman from the 5th, we need to lower that mic so I can see you when you're back.
It's not on.
Please proceed.
Is it? Okay. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I'd like to have as my honored guest today, of course, my intern Malvin Hubbard and my cousin Mallard Hubbard who's a recent graduate of SIUE Erisville with a major in Economic and Finance, and I just wanted to welcome him to the Board of Aldermen to witness our process. Thank you.
Alderwoman from the 2nd. We'll take you from the 1st. Go ahead. Alderwoman from the 1st.
Mr. President, members of the Board, I'd like to introduce as my special guest Mr. Anthony Shahid, who is a longtime friend of mine and has afforded me the opportunity to meet many special people, including the Honorable Minister Verkan in my former life as the 20th Ward Alderwoman, and also to bring up that they just, Mr. Shahid along with millions and millions of other Muslims have just started the celebration of Ramadan, which goes until July the 17th and which day is a religious ceremony for Muslims all over the world and we have millions of Muslims, and so I wanted to welcome Mr. Shahid as my guest. But I also would like to speak to several of the guests that the Alderwoman from the 19th had. One of her honorees is Angela Wimbush. Her family grew up, well, I grew up in politics representing her father and her mother. Mary and Reverend Wimbush, her aunt, also lived in the ward, so I've had a long-time relationship with the Wimbush family who also, the sisters are Lane's. So if you know about the Austin Lane, he is the brother of Mrs., Mr. Lane is the uncle of Angela Wimbush. And also, I wanted to just say how excited I am. When you talked about Shaft, there are a lot of people here who are younger and don't know about Shaft. When Shaft came out, I was a manager, assistant manager at the theater, my first job, where I grew up in Decatur, Illinois, and it was R-rated and I was assistant manager and I was only 16, so I actually was not supposed to see that movie, but I had to because of my job. And so that was growing up in my lifetime. Richard Roundtree was, I don't know who they think is now, but Richard Roundtree was somebody that we adored. We knew every line to the movie. All my girlfriends now will say, "Ask me, did you go over and meet him?"
Yeah.
And not only that, I also watched him, I watched him through his breast cancer and what he did to let men know that that breast cancer could be found in men also. And then I loved him in Soul Food, so I've watched him throughout his career and I just wanted to say a special welcome to him and I am gonna go be a groupie and take a picture so that I can prove that I met Richard Roundtree to not only my girlfriends, but to my mother also.
There you go. There you go. Alderman from the 11th?
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning.
Good morning.
Mr. President, I would like to have as one of my special guests Mike Frame. Mike is a former state representative from Jefferson County, currently is working for the United Food Workers. Is that right, Mike? Thank you. Mr. President, standing over by the door to my left where we enter, Dan Wabi and I go way, way back, he is in town today from, from some town in Florida that I can never pronounce. I can tell you, he's Tiger Woods' next-door neighbor. That's the best I can do in Florida. But Mr. Wabi and I worked together a long time. He's in town for the 40th anniversary of the Chaminade Flyers High School. Dan worked with me in Jefferson City as, when I was the majority floor lady, he worked with me, Mr. President, when I served in the office which you're currently holding as President of the St. Louis Board of Aldermen. And Dan is now a very successful, I don't wanna call him a lobbyist, so I'll call him a governmental affairs specialist for the Eli Lilly Company. Dan, thanks. Welcome.
Welcome. Alderwoman from the 14th.
Excuse me. Good morning, Mr. President. I would like to have for my special honored guest Gary Otten from the Painters District Council, Jeff Hans, Keith Taylor from the Carpenters Council, and Demetrius Alfred from the Firefighters Local 73. Thank you.
Alderwoman from the 1st.
Mr. President, members of the Board, I am sorry, I forgot to introduce one of the most special guests here. Been a longtime friend of mine and is your 16th, 6th Ward Committee Woman, Ms. Ollie Stewart, who is in her 80s. I won't say her address, but when I get to be a big kid, I wanna be just like Ms. Stewart who has all the energy of, she can wear you out, she takes you out and around the city, she will wear you out. She is wonderful.
Any further introductions? Any further introductions? Again, one more time before we move on to our regular agenda, I wanna thank each and every one of our guests for attending this, this part of this morning's meeting. Feel free whenever you like, don't feel like you have to stick around for the rest of the meeting. We will see a lot of you tonight, but thank you so much again. Let's give them all one more big round of applause and thank them for their time this Alderman from the 18th, you're recognized on approval of the minutes.
Yes, yes, Mr. President, members of the Board. I move for the approval of the minutes of the June 5th meeting.
Moved by the Alderman from the 18th, entertain a second on that motion. Seconded, seconded by the Alderman from the 11th, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Report of city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in sections A, B, and C of the agenda and have been placed in all Aldermen's mailboxes.
We will dispense with line items 7 and 8. Would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars? Would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars? We will dispense with line items 9 and 10. Alderman from the 27th, you're recognized.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to suspend the rules for the purpose of introduct, or for the purpose of introducing Board Bill 124.
It's been moved by the Alderman, Alderman from the 27th, that we suspend the rules for the purposes of the introduction of Board Bill Number 124. Any discussion? I entertain a second on that motion. Seconded by the Alderman from the 11th. Madam Clerk, please call the robe.
Alderwoman Tyus, Alderwoman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderwoman Ingracia, Alderman Colder, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortman, Alderman Valmer, Alderman Villa, Alderman Honowitz, Alderwoman Murphy, Alderwoman Howard, Alderwoman Green, Alderwoman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderwoman Davis, Alderwoman Spencer, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vaccaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cohen, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderwoman Krusen, President Reed,
Aye.
Alderwoman Tyus, Alderwoman Flowers, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderman Colder, Alderman Rhodey, Alderwoman Flowers.
By a vote, you stay in the motion. Alderman from the 27th, suspend the rules for purposes of introduction of Board Bill Number 124. First reading of Board Bills.
Board Bill 116, sponsored by Alderman Carter and Earn Establesting a Stop Site For Northbound/Southbound Traffic Traveling On Goodfellow At Veronica Causing It To Be A Four-Way Stop Intersection And Containing An Emergency Clause. Board Bill 117, sponsored by Alderwoman Hubbard and Earn Establesting Recommended By The Board Of Investment And Apportment Authorized And Directed St. Louis Municipal Finance Corporation To Procure A Loan For The Purpose Of Funding The Acquisition Of Real Property In The City Including Cost Of Securing Options To Purchase Such Real Property And Other Costs Necessary To Prepare Such Real Property As A Site For The Nor, Of The, As A Site For The Western Headquarters Of The National Geospatial Intelligence Agency. Board Bill 118, sponsored by Alderwoman Krusen and Earn Establesting Recommended By The Board Of Public Service Of The City Establishing A Public Works Improvement Project For A Forest Park Parkway Over Metro Link Bridge. works improvement project for a forest park, parkway over MetroLink bridge replacement project involving the reconstruction of existing bridge in Forest Park over the MetroLink and associated roadway improvements, appropriating the total estimated cost for planning, engineering, design, construction of the Forest Park, parkway over MetroLink bridge placement project of $3,750,000 from various sources, including the Federal Highway Administration, moving ahead for progress in the 21st Century Act, and BJC Healthcare, and containing a public work emergency clause. Board Bill 119, sponsored by Alderwoman Krusen and on its amending Order 68572, which ordinance relates, relates to a lease between the city of St. Louis and Port Authority Commission of the city for certain land improvements comprising the municipal river terminal on the North River front, approved by the Board of Investment and Apportement Port Commission, the Board of Public Service, authorizing the execution of time to the ground of lease authorized under the said ordinance and thereby, and hereby authorizing the execution of the First Amendment to the lease agreement in order to extend the term to 25 years by and between the port and SCF Lewis and Clark Terminal, and appropriating the form of the standard provision as modified attached to said lease agreement, authorizing other matters with respect thereto, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 120, sponsored by Alderman Vommer and on its affirming adoption of a redevelopment plan, redevelopment area, redevelopment project, authorizing the execution of a redevelopment agreement between the city and Jerry Ackerman Motor Company, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 121, sponsored by Alderman Vommer and on its designating a portion of the city as a redevelopment area known as the Northeast Hampton I-44 Redevelopment Area Pursuant to Real Property Tax Increment Allocation Redevelopment Act, approving the redevelopment plan redevelopment project adopting tax increment and financing within the redevelopment area, making findings with respect thereto, establishing the Northeast Hampton I-44 Special Allocation Fund, authorizing certain actions by the city officials and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 122, sponsored by Alderman Vacaro and on its establishing a stop site for all northbound and southbound traffic traveling on McCausland at the Lozen, and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 123, sponsored by Alderwoman Behringer and on its adopted pursuant to section 105.483, affirming the provisions of the ordinance 69536, establishing a policy for the disclosure of potential conflicts of interest, substantial interest for certain municipal officials, and containing a mort, an emergency clause. Board Bill 124, sponsored by Alderman Carter, and on its recommended by the Board of Investment and Apportement, authorizing supplemental appropriation, commonly referred to as the City of St. Louis Annual Operating Plan for Fiscal Year 2015, 2016, appropriating and set apart the sum of $309,066 from the Parking Division Fund for the operations and expenses of the Treasurer's Department Office of Financial Empowerment Fund, 1116, notwithstanding or limiting any portion of the funds to be allocated to the city's General Revenue Fund as designated in statute and containing an emergency clause. That's the extent of our first reading.
Reference to committee.
To the Streets Committee, Board Bills 116 and 122, to the Legislation Committee, Board Bill 123, to the Transportation and Commerce Committee, Board Bill 118 and 119, to the Housing Committee, Board Bills 109, 117, 120, and 121, and to the Ways and Means Committee, Board Bills 108 and 110. That's the extent of reference to committee.
Madam Clerk, please assign Board Bill Number 124 to Ways and Means.
So noted. That's the extent of reference to committee.
Second reading.
Following Board Bills were reported out of the Ways and Means Committee, Board Bill 1, Committee Substitute, sponsored by President Reed and Alderman Conway, and on its making appropriation for payment of interest, expenses, and principal of the city's bond indebtedness, establishing the city tax rates, and making appropriation for current year expenses of the city government, Water Division, St. Louis Airport Commission, Affordable Housing Trust Fund, Healthcare Trust Fund, and Use Tax Excess Trust Fund. Board Bill 99, sponsored by Alderman Conway and President Reed, and on its pertaining to the Transit Sales Tax pursuant to ordinance 63168, creating the City Public Transit Sales Tax Trust Fund, directing the treasurer to deposit funds received pursuant to said sales tax into the City Public Transit Sales Tax Trust Fund Account 1, appropriating $11,32,500, providing for the payment of such funds during the period of July the 1st, 2015 through June the 30th, 2016, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 100, sponsored by Alderman Conway and President Reed, and on its pertaining to the Transit Sales Tax pursuant to ordinance 64111, creating the City Public Transit Sales Tax Trust Fund, directing the treasurer to deposit funds received pursuant to said sales tax into the City Public Transit Sales Tax Fund Account 2, appropriating $11,32,500 from said sales tax for the period herein stated to the Bay State Development Agency for certain purposes, providing for the payment of such funds during the period of July the 1st, 2015 through June the 30th, 2016, containing a severability clause. Board Bill 101, sponsored by Alderman Conway and President Reed, and on its appropriating the sum of $22,065,000, which sum is hereby appropriated out of the Transportation Trust Fund to the Bay State Development Agency for transportation purposes for further, providing that the appropriation is conditional upon the Bay State Development Agency applying the Board of Investment and Apportement and Annual Evaluation Report, further providing that in no event shall the comptroller draw warrants on the treasurer for an amount greater than the amount of proceeds deposited in the Transportation Trust Fund during the period from July the 1st, 2015 through June the 30th, 2016, providing for the appropriation to be reduced if certain funds are used for other than public transit purposes, and containing a severability clause. That's the extent of our second reading.
Dispense with line item 14, perfection consent.
Board Bill 7, sponsored by Alderman Williamson, and on its approving a blighting study in a redevelopment plan for 5762 and 5764 McPherson, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 13, sponsored by Alderwoman Green, and on its approving a blighting study in a redevelopment plan for 3811 Juniata, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 14, sponsored by Alderwoman Green, and on its approving a blighting study in a redevelopment plan for 3806 Arsenal, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 15, sponsored by Alderwoman Green, and on its approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 3836 Hartford and 3831 Wyoming, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 16, sponsored by Alderman Villa, and on its approving a blighting study in a redevelopment plan for 5808 through 12 Michigan, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 17, sponsored by Alderman Villa, and on its approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 6308 and 7100 Michigan, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 18, sponsored by Alderwoman Murphy, and on its approving a blighting study in a redevelopment plan for 5414 Alaska, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 19, sponsored by Alderman Colder, and on its approving a blighting study in a redevelopment plan for 1817, 1821 through 23 South 9th Street, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 20, sponsored by Alderman Colder, and on its approving a blighting study in a redevelopment plan for 1923 through 25 South 10th Street, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 46, sponsored by Alderwoman Spencer, and on its approving a redevelopment plan for 2700 through 06 Cherokee. Board Bill 81, sponsored by Alderwoman Flowers, and on its authorizing and directing the Director of the Department of Human Services via the St. Louis Area Agency on Aging to accept.
As some order.
A contract for the Missouri Alliance of Area Agency on Aging in the amount of $15,000, and to expend those funds for benefits enrollment activities for the adults with disabilities and senior citizens, and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 82, sponsored by Alderwoman Flowers, and on its recommended and approved by the Director of Human Services and the Board of Investment and Apportement, authorizing and directing the mayor and the comptroller with the recommendation of the Director of the Department of Human Services to accept and enter into an executed grant agreement awards to provide for the reimbursement or payment to the city for the United States of America's share of eligible costs incurred for the city-approved eligible programs, furthering the work of the continuum of care under the grant agreements, and specifically authorizing and directing the acceptance of the 2013 Continuum of Care Grants, application in the amount of $147,856, and the 2014 Continuum of Care Grant Application in the amount of $146,197, and future Continuum of Care Grant Awards, and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 43, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, and on its recommended by the Planning Commission, and approving and amended community improvement, Community Unit Plan for the area located in the city and comprising a portion of the Washington University Medical Center, pledging cooperation of the Board of Aldermen, and requesting various official departments, boards, agencies of the city to cooperate and to exercise their respective powers in a manner consistent with the amended Community Units Plan. Board Bill 57, sponsored by Alderwoman Hubbard, and on its recommended by the Planning Commission to change the zoning of property as indicated on the district map from D Multiple Family Dwelling District to the F Neighborhood Commercial District for properties on North 13th Street, and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 58, sponsored by Alderwoman Hubbard, and on its recommended by the Planning Commission to change the zoning of property from C Multiple Family Dwelling District to the J Industrial District for properties on Glasgow Avenue, and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 59, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, and on its recommended by the Planning Commission to change the zoning of property from J Industrial District to the H Area Commercial District for properties on Hickory and Rutgers Street, and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 38, sponsored by Alderman Villa, and on its to regulate employer-employee working relationships between the city and all employees under the Medical Examiner's Office, repealing Order 69193, allocating certain other employees to a grade with rate, and including an emergency clause. Board Bill 39, sponsored by Alderman Villa, and on its relating to the appointment of, and salaries of certain employees of, in the Collector of Revenue's Office, repealing Order 69189 and 69617, allocating certain other employees to a grade with rate, and including an emergency clause. Board Bill 64, sponsored by Alderman Bosley, and on its to repeal Order 68706 relating to the appointment and rates of compensation of certain employees of the licensed collector, and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 72, sponsored by Alderwoman Howard, and on its repealing Order 69865, and in lieu thereof, and acting a new ordinance prohibiting the issuance of any liquor license for any currently non-licensed premises within the boundaries of the 14th Ward Liquor Control District, and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 80, sponsored by Alderwoman Krusen, and on its repealing Order 69159, and in lieu thereof, and acting a new ordinance prohibiting the issuance of any 3 a.m. closing permit for any currently nine, three, 3 a.m. licensed premises within the boundaries of the 28th Ward Liquor Control District, and containing an emergency clause. That's the extent of perfection consent.
Alderman from the 18th, you recognize on the motion for the perfection consent calendar.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the Board. I move for approval of the perfection consent calendar.
Moved by the Alderman from the 18th, seconded by the Alderman from the 25th. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. We will dispense with line item 16, third reading consent.
Board Bill 79, 66, 69, 70, 71, 73, 74, and 75.
Alderman from the 18th, you recognize on motion for the third reading consent calendar.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the Board. I move for approval of the third reading consent calendar.
Moved by the Alderman from the 18th, seconded by the Alderman from the 25th. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the robe.
Alderwoman Tyus, Alderwoman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderwoman Ingracia, Alderman Colder, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortmann, Alderman Vommer, Alderman Villa, Alderman Honowitz, Alderwoman Murphy, Alderwoman Howard, Alderwoman Green, Alderwoman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderwoman Davis, Alderwoman Spencer, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vacaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cone, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderwoman Krusen, President Reed.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd, Alderwoman Krusen, 27, aye vote.
By a vote, you sustain the motion from the Alderman from the 18th, and third read, and finally passed the aforementioned bills. We will dispense with line item 18, report of enrollment.
Board Bills 79, 66, 69, 70, 71, 73, 74, and 75.
All other business being suspended. The President shall in open session affix his signature heretofore to the end that these may become law.
Resolution 64, sponsored by Alderman Ortmann. The Board of Aldermen approved the recommendation of the Director for the appropriation of Neighborhood Parks Capital Improvement Account Funds for fiscal year 2016, attached here to Exhibit A.
Alderman from the 9th, you recognize on first reading of Resolution Number 64.
Thank you, Mr. President. Will you place Resolution 64 in the Parks Committee?
It's been moved by the Alderman from the 9th, I entertain a second on that motion. Seconded by the Alderman from the 16th, that we place Resolution Number 64 in the Parks Committee. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. Madam Clerk, please assign Resolution 64 to Parks.
So noted. Resolution 65, sponsored by Alderman Ortmann. The Board of Aldermen approved the recommendation of the Director for the appropriation of Neighborhood Parks Capital Improvement Account Funds for fiscal year 2016, attached heretofore and Exhibit A.
Alderman from the 9th, you recognize on first reading of Resolution Number 65.
Thank you, Mr. President. Will you place Resolution Number 65 in the Parks Committee?
It's been moved by the Alderman from the 9th, that we place Resolution 65 in the Parks Committee. I entertain a second on that motion. Seconded by the Alderman from the 26th. Any, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. Madam Clerk, please assign Resolution Number 65 to Parks.
So noted. That's the extent of first reading of resolution.
Second reading.
We have none.
Miss Lane's unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcements.
Tuesday, Ways and Means Committee meeting at 8:30 a.m. in the Kennedy Room. Also on Tuesday, Neighborhood Development Committee meeting at 9 a.m. in the Kennedy Room. On Wednesday, June the 24th, Housing Committee meeting at 8:30 a.m. in the Kennedy Room. Also on Wednesday, Public Employees Committee meeting at 9 a.m. in the Leisure Room. Friday, June the 26th, Full Board meeting, 10 a.m. in the chambers. That's the extent of my announcement.
Alderman from the 9th.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the Board, if we could schedule a Parks Committee hearing Tuesday at 10. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that.
So noted.
All along from the 16th.
Thanks. There will be a Legislative Committee hearing at 8:30 a.m. on Thursday morning.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that.
Eight though. So noted.
Any further announcements? Alderman from the 26th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. We'll have a ward meeting Thursday the 25th, 26th Ward meeting, 6:30 at Union Memorial Church. That's Thursday at 6:30, Union Memorial Church. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderwoman from the first.
Mr. President, members of the board, if everyone has finished making, uh, their announcement, I would like to just speak to what happened in South Carolina. I am an AME, but I wanted to wait until everybody else was finished with their-
Okay, I'll- I'll ask you then. Thank you, Alderwoman. Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderwoman from the nineteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. Uh, I wanted to announce that there will be a rules meeting on this Wednesday at ten- next Wednesday at ten-thirty in the Kennedy Room.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that.
Also, very quickly, I wanted to thank all those who participated and supported my community block party last night, even though we had to move it out of the park into the building. It worked out well, so Urban Strategy, C Sharp, Attorney Rodrick Witt, Reliance Bank, Head Start of Urban League, City of St. Louis, and Justine Peterson, thank you for a wonderful event for the residents.
Any- any further announcements? Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderwoman from the first.
Mr. President and members of the board, I'd like to, uh, just say, I want to speak to what happened at Emmanuel AME Church in South Carolina. It's a sad event. It touches me greatly, um, because I grew up in the AME church. Um, it would have touched me anyway because I can't imagine going into a church and praying with people for an hour and then having not feeling God and having the audacity, I don't know what you call it, to then murder nine people. Um, I have to think that this young man is- is- is troubled, and I want God to bless everyone, and God have mercy on everyone. I don't often talk about my religion, because I do believe in separation of church and state, but in this case, I really wanted people to know who that, how Emmanuel came to be and about the AME church. Um, it has a rich, proud history, and my family has been on- on and off either AME or CME, and as growing up, I didn't really understand the difference because I thought that they were pretty much the same. Um, when I traveled to Philadelphia, my husband and I made pilgrimage to the Mother Bethel AME Church. Mother Bethel was founded in seventeen ninety-four by Richard Allen, an African American Methodist minister. The church was organized due to the racial segregation in white Methodist churches. Blacks had to worship in the back of the balconies of the white Methodist churches. In eighteen sixteen, Bishop Allen and other black Methodist congregations formed the new African Methodist Episcopal Church domination so that all could come equally to worship God. They didn't do it and say, "This is a black church," because whites are, uh, are welcome there too, but it was so that all could worship God, and this is the spirit of which Emmanuel AME in South Carolina came from. It was- that's why they opened their door to the young man and invited the man. People said, "Why would you do that? Why would you bring a stranger into your church?" Because that's what churches are. Um, you see, uh, Reverend Goodman sitting over there, Lee is an attorney, but he's also a minister in the AME church. Uh, St. John's is which- where I was married out of, so he knows the spirit of the AME church, the openness, the, uh, inviting people to come in. So I just wanted to- for us not to pass this up and to take a minute of silence for those nine souls that we lost, and also for the shooter that would do something so horrific. The last time I remember this, I was a little girl, and they were blowing up the church in Birmingham. It appears that we are going through a cycle again, and I'm hoping that we are not, because, uh, when people are not safe to go worship in their churches and they're not safe to invite people in to worship, that is a really scary feeling, and so my heart goes out, uh, to not only people in the church, but people of South Carolina, and just to the nation for- for what we seem to be witnesses, and I would ask if we could have a moment of silence for those people.
Uh, would everyone in the chambers and galleries is able to rise, to stand and join us in a moment of silence? Thank you, Alderwoman. Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the eighteenth, you recognize on the motion to excuse.
All- Alderman, we're present, present, Mr. President.
Alderman, you recognize on the motion to adjourn.
Uh, Mr. President, members of the board, I move that the board adjourns until Friday, June twenty-sixth, two thousand and fifteen.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the eighteenth, seconded by the Alderman from the twenty-fifth. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, stand, adjourn.